Councilor CMO.
Here.
Councilor CMO.
Present.
Councilor Edwards. Councilor Asabi George.
Present.
Councilor Flaherty.
I'm here, Mr. President.
[laughing]. Councilor Flynn.
Here.
Councilor Janey.
Present.
Councilor McCarthy.
Here.
We should be home, then.
That's right.
[laughing]. Thank you, Councilor McCarthy.
Councilor Melli.
Councilor Presley. Councilor Wu. And Councilors Akam.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I love my male colleagues. I actually needed a laugh today, so thank you.
[laughing].
At this time, I would like all my colleagues, guests, and staff to please rise as Councilor Janey comes forward to introduce today's clergy and lead us in the invocation. I ask all guests to remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Thank you so much, Madam President. First, I just want to congratulate you and our clerk for receiving that honor by the Dorchester Y. Was it?
Oh, yes.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
You can stand right over here.
Thank you.
Yes, so thank you, thank you. And so, I've invited Pastor Gerald to join me here. This is my very first time opening our meeting in prayer, and as the granddaughter of a Baptist preacher, I wanted to begin by going back to my roots, my own Baptist roots. So 12th Baptist Church has been my family's church for almost 100 years. Generations of my family were married at 12th, christened at 12th, baptized at 12th, counseled at 12th, and eulogized at 12th Baptist. The historic 12th Baptist Church was also home to Reverend Martin Luther King when he lived in Boston. There is a rich history of this beloved church of Roxbury, so it's such an honor for me to bring before you the pastor of the historic 12th Baptist Church, the Reverend Arthur Thomas Gerald Jr. Now Pastor Gerald was born here in Boston. As a teenager in the 1950s, he came under the influence of Reverend Michael Haynes. He graduated from the English High School and went on to Lincoln University, a historically black college, before transferring to Berkshire Christian College. He was ordained in 1976. During his graduate studies, he was called to join the ministerial team at 12th under Reverend Haynes. Reverend Gerald is an educator and had a distinguished career at Salem State University. He has won numerous honors in the community and in the academic world, including an honorary doctorate degree. He has also served on a number of prominent boards, including having served as the president of the Black Ministerial Alliance. Reverend Gerald is humble, strong, quiet, faithful. He's an ardent minister of the Lord Jesus Christ, and his Bible verse can be found describing his life in Joshua 24:15, "But for me and my house we will serve the Lord." Reverend Gerald is world-traveled, but he has never forgotten his roots in our community. I often see him and his church members leading peace walks in my neighborhood, and I always feel blessed when they sing Christmas carols on my street. So it is a great honor to have him before us today to open the meeting with prayer. Thank you, Pastor Gerald.
Thank you very much, Sister Kim, and certainly her roots go long, and the family is deep in the 12th Baptist Church. To the council president, this is an historic council for the city of Boston, and it's quite appropriate that somebody from an historic church come to pray for this historic council. Certainly, I'm truly thankful. I can't tell you everything about City Councilor Janey, but there's something that I love that she does when I go and sing Christmas carols in front of our -- can I tell them?
You can tell them.
I like to eat, if you haven't noticed, but she makes the best sweet potato pies in the city of Boston, and when I go sing the Christmas carols in front of our house, she always comes out with a warm sweet potato pie, and that's one of our best stops. Oh, [laughing], go ahead. [applause]. Wow. I'm sorry. If you're on a share with the Come to 12th Baptist Church, if there's any left, we'll give it to you as well. Now let's get to the business of the day, and let me invite you to bow your heads and close your eyes as we invoke God's presence on our gathering today. Eternal God and Heavenly Father, on this day that you have made, we will give you the thanks as we rejoice and are glad therein. Lord, you have been our help in ages past, our hope for the years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home. We ask your blessings on the members of this historic council who have been called to lead this city in which we live, work, and play. As this renowned council has been elected by the people, for the people, to uphold their positions of responsibility with honor, distinction, commitment, and dedication on behalf of the people. May this council govern with dignity, and may they do so in a manner where that will truly lead this city to be a greater city, that great city that is talked about in the Word of God, that is not made of hands, but is eternal in the heavens. Lord, I pray that you will give this council your wisdom to govern. Lord, I pray that you will give this council a greater sense of the welfare and true needs of the people of Boston. Lord, I pray that you will give this council a greater thirst for liberty and justice for all. And Lord, I pray that this council may be endowed with the ability to work together in harmony, so that the people of the city of Boston will be the benefactors of their good works and their good deeds. Now I pray that you bless the proceedings and the business of this day to your honor and glory. For thine is the kingdom, thine is the power, thine is the glory. Forever and ever, world without end to the glory of God. Let everybody say amen.
Amen.
Say amen again.
Amen.
And shout it out so that everybody in Boston can hear it.
Amen.
God bless you. Thank you very much.
I have to do it. I just want to.
Okay.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I gotta take my pie and be careful.
He wasn't gonna last very long, and he'd be good to see him. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Janey, and thank you, Reverend. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, if there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last council meeting will stand approved. Seeing and hearing no objection, the minutes for the last council meeting stand so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 0841, message and order authorizing the city of Boston, acting through its Department of Neighborhood Development, to apply for, accept, and expend FFY-18 Housing and Community Development Grant in the amount of $27,107,93 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD. This order includes the following programs and estimates not to exceed amounts. Community Development Block Grant, $17,229,498. Home Investment Partnership Program, $5,863,642. Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, $2,588,781. An Emergency Solutions Grant, $1,418,872.
Docket 0841 will be assigned to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Petitions, memorials, and remontrances.
Docket number 0842, petition of local motion of Boston for a license to operate motor vehicles for the carriage of passengers for hire over certain streets in Boston.
Docket 0842 will be assigned to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. And at this time, Madam Clerk, if you could amend the attendance record to reflect that Council Pressley is here.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, if you would, if you'd like me, I could read docket 0843 through 0847.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0843, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the campus high school urban renewal plan, project number MAS R-129, with respect to parcels R-17B, R-17C, R-17D, and R-17E. Docket number 0844, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the campus high school urban renewal plan, project number MAS R-129, with respect to parcels X-35 and Docket number 0845, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding proposed minor modifications to the Washington Park Urban Renewal Plan, project number MAS R-24, with respect to parcels G-1A, G-1A-3A, I-1-A, and I-1-B. Docket number 0846, communication was received from Brian P. Golden, Director of the Boston Planning and Development Agency regarding the Third Amendment to the report and decision on the Oxford Place Chapter 121A project. And docket number 0847, communication was received from Masport regarding Boston-Logen International Airport 2016 Environmental Data Report, known as 206 EDR/EEA File 3247.
Docket 0843 through 0847 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0848, the consulars bonds of the following have been duly approved by the collective treasurer, were received and approved under the usual terms and conditions. Laura Lee Orenton, Eric Harden, Maria Petron, Shane Reed, Regina Skinner, Joseph Turco, Crefton Waddy Niles.
The Chair moves for approval of docket 0848. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0848 has been approved under the usual terms and conditions.
Madam President, I'll read 0849 and 0850.
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket 0849, notices received from the mayor of his absence in the city from 1:00 p.m. on Thursday, May 31, 2018, until 5:30 p.m. on Saturday, June 2, 2018. And docket number 0850, notices received from the auditing department providing a listing of fiscal, excuse me, 2018 relocations made by the mayor prior to April 15, 2018, for the purpose of continuing operations.
Docket 0849 through 0850 will be placed on file. Moving on to reports of committees.
Madam President, if you would, I'll read docket 0568 through 0581.
Perfect. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 0568, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0568, message and order authorizing the Law Department revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services for repairs to property, which shall be funded by receipts from recoveries of damage to city property caused by third parties, from which the Law Department will be the only unit authorized to expend such expenditures, shall be capped at $500,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0569, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0569, message and order authorizing a limit for the Distributed Energy Resource Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 to facilitate the purchase offsets of greenhouse gas emissions, which shall be associated with a portion of the electricity consumed by the city annually, and to operate, maintain, monitor, and expand the city's existing solar arrays and Boston Public Schools' combined heat and power facilities, which shall be credited with any and all receipts from the sale of renewable and alternative energy certificates and demand response program revenue produced by combined heat and power units located at Boston Public School sites, and solar renewable energy certificates produced by the city's photovoltaic arrays, from which the receipts and resulting expenditures shall not exceed $250,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0570, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0570, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Tourism's revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services to support events and programming on and around City Hall Plaza, to advance tourism and to promote participation in public celebrations, civic and cultural events, which shall be funded by receipts from payments for the use of City Hall Plaza pursuant to the City of Boston Code Ordinance 11-7.14, from which the mayor's Office of Tourism will be the only unit authorized to expend such expenditures, shall be capped at $150,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0571, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0571, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services to support public art to enhance the public realm throughout the city of Boston, which shall be funded by receipts from easements within the public way granted by the Public Improvements Commission, from which the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend such expenditures, and shall be capped at $150,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0572, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0572, message and order authorizing a limit for the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to purchase goods and services to support the operation of the Strand Theater, which shall be funded by receipts from rental fees for the use of the Strand Theater, from which the mayor's Office of Arts and Culture will be the only unit authorized to expend such expenditures, and shall be capped at $150,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number, excuse me, docket number 0573, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0573, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to support the maintenance and repair for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs, into which receipts from lease permit for use and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited, from which BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,600,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0574, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0574, message and order authorizing a limit to the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools' computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional services, which shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for the Boston Public Schools' technology, from which receipts and resulting expenditures shall not exceed $1,500,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0575, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0575, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools' revolving fund for the fiscal year 2019 for Boston Public Schools' transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs, which shall be credited with revenue received by the Boston Public Schools Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activities other than transportation to and from school, from which receipts and resulting expenditures shall not exceed $125,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0576, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0576, message and order authorizing a limit for the Inspection Services Department's revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to reimburse for administrative costs to those city agencies which enforce CBC Chapter 16, Section 1.9, and 1.9b, and for costs associated with licensing and registration, which shall be credited with receipts from all dog registration fees collected pursuant to CBC Chapter 18, Section 1.4, 6 through 10, and fines pursuant to CBC Chapter 16, Sections 1.9 and 1.9b, from which receipts and resulting expenditures shall not exceed $300,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0577, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0577, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Centers for Youth and Families BCYF revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate City Hall Child Care, which shall be credited with any and all receipts from tuition paid by parents or guardians for children enrolled at the center, from which receipts and resulting expenditures shall not exceed $750,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0578, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0578, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department's revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to submit training programs for offices for non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The, excuse me, academy will charge participating outside law enforcement agencies tuition for each recruit, police officer, a special police officer they send to the academy. The tuition paid by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and to provide funds for training needs not otherwise budgeted. The police academy will be the only unit authorized to expend the fund, and such expenditures shall be capped at $100,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0579, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0579, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department of Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 to support the K-9 units' training program for officers and police dogs from non-City of Boston law enforcement agencies. The Special Operating Division will charge tuition and other fees to outside law enforcement agencies for the K-9 unit. The tuition and other fees by outside agencies will be used to purchase training equipment, certify instructors, update facilities, and provide funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. The Special Operations Division will be the only unit authorized to expend the fund, and such expenditures will be capped at $75,000 a year, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0580, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0580, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department of Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2019 for the purpose of purchasing, leasing, or renting space materials and equipment to be partially or wholly used for instructional purposes for new Hackney Carriage Driver applications, and providing funds for other training needs not otherwise budgeted. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $100,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0581, the Committee on Ways and Means, to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0581, message and order authorizing a limit for the Boston Police Department's revolving fund for fiscal year 2019 to pay salaries and benefits of employees and to purchase supplies and equipment necessary to operate Police Department Fitness Center. Revenue for this fund is derived from monthly membership fees. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $250,000, submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilor CMO, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, we are required to annually reauthorize the not-to-exceed amounts for departmental revolving funds. Revolving funds are authorized under MAS General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2. Revolving funds are accounted for separately, are credited only by the departmental receipts received in connection with programs reported by the fund. Expenditures may be made without further appropriation, but cannot exceed the balance of the fund or the total authorized expenditure without further approval. We reviewed FY-19 revolving fund authorizations in companion hearings to departmental budget hearings on April 23, April 24, May 7, May 14, and May 22. This year, we reviewed the following revolving funds. One managed by the Law Department for third-party property damages. One managed by the Environmental Department regarding distributed energy credits. One is managed by the Office of Tourism for City Hall Plaza events. Two are managed by the Office of Arts and Culture, one for public art, and one for the Strand Theater. Three are managed by the Boston Public Schools related to facilities upgrades, technology purchases, and transportation. One managed by Inspection Service Department regarding animal control. One managed by Boston Centers for Youth and Families regarding City Hall Child Care. And four managed by the Boston Police Department, one related to the Police Academy Training Facility, the K-9 Department, Hackney, and the Fitness Center. Revolving, I'm sorry, revolving funds are an important budgetary tool that allows departments' flexibility in managing self-sustaining programs that are difficult to include in their budget due to their intermittent or inconsistent nature. The Committee has formalized and standardized this process by developing a review and reporting structure that takes place alongside the budget process to allow funds to be considered in the context of overall departmental budgets. The review and reporting format that we have established continues to improve transparency and accountability in the annual review and authorization of these funds. I'd like to thank you all for your participating in a robust review of these revolving funds, and my recommendation is passage of all of these dockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor CMO. Councilor CMO is the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends passage of docket 0568 through 0581. We will take each of those revolving funds separately, so bear with me, starting with docket 0568. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0568 has been passed. Docket 0569, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0569 has been passed. Docket 0570, all those in favor, say aye. Docket 0570, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0570 has been passed. Docket 0571, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0571 has been passed. Docket 0572, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0572 has been passed. Docket 0573, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0573 has been passed. Docket 0574, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0574 has been passed. Docket 0575, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0575 has been passed. Docket 0576, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0576 has been passed. Docket 0577, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0577 has been passed. Docket 0578, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0578 has been passed. Docket 0579, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0579 has been passed. Docket 0580, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0580 has been passed. And lastly, docket 0581, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0581 has been passed.
Docket number 0582, Committee on Ways and Means to which was referred on April 11, 2018, docket number 0582, message in order authorizing the appropriation of $1,200,000 from the income of the George Francis Parkman Fund. The funds are to be expended under the direction of the Commissioner of Parks and Recreation for the maintenance and improvement of Boston Common and parks in existence since January 12, 1887 submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you. These matters were sponsored by the mayor as part of the FY19 capital budget on April 11. And as you know, these dockets require two votes by the council, and I rise to ask for a first reading. Oh, this is the Parkman Fund? I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's okay, thank you. We'll get to that other one, too.
Okay. So, again, this was sponsored by the mayor on April 11, and referred to the committee, and we held our hearing on May 24. Dennis Roach, the Director of Administration and Finance, and Nicole Domel, Finance Director for the Boston Parks Department, reviewed the Parkman Fund and its intent. The fund was established in 1908 from a bequest from George Francis Parkman, designated for maintenance and upkeep of the Parkman-supported parks, which include the Boston Common, the Public Garden, the Fens, Highland Park, Horatio Harris Park, and Malcolm X Park. The balance of the fund sits at approximately $25 million. Breakdown of the funds are following as follows. $1.2 million is appropriated to fund the operations of Boston Common and parks with $950,000 to be used towards the general care and maintenance. It was explained that $224,000 will be used for the specialized maintenance of the horticultural and infrastructure, with the remaining balance of $26,000 designated for equipment, infrastructure improvements, and repairs of the parks. This is important and necessary work for the upkeep of our historic and aging parks, which has been in existence since January 12, 1887. As Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, I recommend passage. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends passage of docket 0582. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, docket 0582 has been passed. Moving on to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0559 through 0563, audits for the FY19 operating budget, including annual appropriations for departmental operations, annual appropriations for the School Department, appropriations for other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, appropriations for certain transportation and public realm improvements, and appropriation for certain park improvements.
Docket 0559 through 0563 will remain in the Committee on Government, the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0564, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to enter into one or more lease, lease purchase, or installment sales agreements in fiscal year 2019 in an amount not to exceed $31,700,000. These funds are to be used by various city departments for the acquisition of equipment in furtherance of their respective governmental functions. The list of equipment includes computer equipment, hardware and software, motor vehicles and trailers, ambulances, firefighting equipment, office equipment, telecommunication equipment, photocopying equipment, medical equipment, school and educational equipment, school buses, parking meters, street lighting installations, traffic signal equipment, and equipment functionally related to and components of the foregoing filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9, 2018.
Madam Clerk, can we also read docket 0565? We'll have Counselor Siomo talk about them at the same time.
Thank you. Docket number 0565, message in order approving the appropriation of $291,330,000 from the acquisition of interests in land or the acquisition of assets or the landscaping, alteration, remediation, rehabilitation of improvements of public land, the construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, improvement, alteration, remodeling, enlargement, demolition, removal of extraordinary repairs of public buildings, facilities, assets, works, or infrastructure, for the cost of feasibility studies or engineering or architectural services for plans and specifications for the development, design, purchase, and installation of computer hardware or software and computer-assisted integrated financial management and accounting systems, for any other public work improvement or asset with a maximum useful life of at least five years and not otherwise specified, for planting shade trees for the purpose of various city departments, including the Boston Center for Youth and Families, Department of Innovation and Technology, Environment, Fire, Inspection Services Department, Neighborhood Development, Office of Arts and Culture, Parks and Recreation, Police, Property Management, Public Works, and Transportation, Boston Public Library, Boston Public Schools, Boston Redevelopment Authority, and Public Health Commission.
Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. These matters represent the fiscal year 19 capital budget sponsored by the mayor and referred to the committee again on April 11, 2018. As you know, these dockets require two votes by the council, and I ask, rise to ask for the first reading today. The projects funded by the FY19 capital budget have a significant impact on the quality of life of Boston residents. They maintain and improve our infrastructure, enhance our mobility, ensure our safety, and provide necessary open space for both residents and visitors to enjoy all that Boston has to offer across all of Boston's neighborhoods. Capital projects often take years to complete, so the funding that we are approving today may represent only a portion of the total project cost. For example, my beloved Faneuil Library has an authorization of $1,750,000 this year. However, the total project cost is $12,625,000, and will include improved accessibility, interior renovations, and a new building addition. Our authorization in this budget include the Office of Arts and Culture, $1,700,000 for the Percent for Arts Program, which will dedicate 1% of the city's annual capital budget for the commissioning of permanent public art and municipal spaces. The Boston Fire Department, $6,784,644 for the design and construction of new fire stations for Engines 17 and 42. Boston Police Department, $23,900,000 to construct a new police station in East Boston. The Boston Public Library, as I said earlier, the Faneuil Library plus $100,000 to engage a professional service firm to assess the viability of candidate sites for a new Chinatown library. $16,700,000 to design and construct a new Adams Street branch library, and $3,500,000 for comprehensive building renovation for the Roselandale Branch Library. Boston Public Schools, $2.5 million for security-related improvements at various schools, including the installation of intercom and clock systems, rekeying of doors, expanding card access, replacing smoke doors, installing security cameras, motion detectors, and other security-related improvements. Boston Transportation Department, $400,000 for green links, which will create a connected network of pedestrian and bicycle paths that will allow more access to green, open spaces. Department of Innovation and Technology, $1 million to implement solutions to manage and mitigate cybersecurity risks and resiliency. The Environment Department, $600,000 for climate resilience planning for city neighborhoods and municipal facilities affected by climate change as part of Climate Ready Boston Phase II. Million dollars to support the development of a study that will examine the feasibility of constructing a barrier in Boston Harbor in response to expected sea level rise due to climate change as part of Climate Ready Boston Harbor Study. Parks and Recreation, $5,232,000 for the comprehensive park renovation of Cassidy Field, including ball fields, courts, passive areas, pathways, utilities, and landscaping. This will also include renovations to the fieldhouse. $2.5 million for Heronby Park Phase II renovations, including the multipurpose soccer, lacrosse fields, including extending the main pedestrian pathway, improve lighting, and install new plantings. And Public Works, $50 million to design and construct a new bridge from Moon Island to Long Island. $4 million to reconstruct roads, install new pedestrian ramps, enhance bicycle access, install new tree plantings, and improve lighting on Cummings Highway from River Street in Mattapan Square to Harbert Street. And $13,690,000 to refurbish and/or restore the existing Northern Avenue Bridge. I believe this is a responsible plan that will help with important maintenance and upkeep of our assets, improve our neighborhoods, and demonstrate our commitment to an environmentally and economically sustainable Boston. I ask you to vote affirmative on our first reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor Siomo, Chairman of the Committee on Ways and Means, recommends, recommends passage, and in order to do that, we have to take two separate votes that are two weeks apart. We'll take the first vote today, and we'll take them separately, and each of these requires a roll call vote. So, Madam Clerk, if we could do docket 0564 first?
Docket number 0564.
It's okay. It's been a long budget.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Siomo.
Yeah.
Counselor Siomo, yeah. Counselor Asabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Asabi George, yes. Counselor Edwards, I'm sorry. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zecham.
Yes.
Counsel Zecham, yes.
Madam President, we have a 12 to 0 vote for the first reading of docket number 0564.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0564 will be assigned for further action. Docket 0565?
Docket 0565, Counsel Baker.
Yes.
Counsel Baker, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Siomo.
Yes.
Counsel Siomo, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Asabi George.
Yes.
Counsel Asabi George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Janey.
Yes.
Counsel Janey, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. Counsel Presley.
Yes.
Counsel Presley, yes. Counsel Wu.
Yes.
Counsel Wu, yes. And Counsel Zecham.
Counsel Zecham, yes.
Madam President, docket number 0565 has received its first reading with a vote of 12 in favor and no opposition.
Docket, thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0565 will be assigned for further action. Moving on to motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0851, Counselors Janey and Asabi George offer the following order for hearing on sober housing in the City of Boston.
Counsel Janey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Asabi George, for co-sponsoring this hearing order with me. I also want to commend my colleague at the State House, Rep. Liz Malia, for her work on this issue. For those in recovery or seeking recovery, sober homes can be vital, often required as a condition of probation or to get custody of children. It's housing for those who want to stay well and who need that support from their peers or services. It's designed for those committed to sober living who have struggled with addiction and substance abuse disorder. I'm appalled and outraged, as I'm sure many of you are, of the recent situation in Roxbury at a sober home, where the owner and operator was arrested for just appalling things. The residents there and the surrounding community at that time when that sober home was being built was told that these would be townhouses. Instead, it became what many would call a flop house. The owner of that property is accused of trading drugs and sex and for legal representation, drugs and legal representation for sex. It's an abuse of trust. It is an example of a bad player who's preying on the most vulnerable in our community and who is profiting off of substance addiction of these residents. It's shameful, and it's outrageous, and it should not be tolerated. We must ensure that those who are most vulnerable in our community and those who are seeking help are not abused. Residents of sober homes are not always receiving the proper supports, and too often they're not receiving the services that they need to stay well. Residents of sober homes must be able to voice their complaints about their conditions without fear of retribution, and recovery programs need to be confident in the safety and accommodations when they are referring clients. I have long heard the complaints and concerns from residents, from neighborhood groups, about sober homes in my district, but I want to be very clear that residents understand the importance of these sober homes in our community. This is not an issue of NIMBY, but what it is, it's an issue of equity, and we must all do our part. We know that the few that are certified are clustered primarily in Dorchester and Roxbury and in communities of color, even though addiction knows no color or no neighborhood boundary. With those that are not certified, it's almost impossible to know where they're located, whether or not they're safe havens, or whether they're hell houses. We need stronger regulations, and we need to do more to ensure that those in recovery are able to rebuild their lives and receive the supports that they need, and that requires that all of us in every corner of our city are part of that solution. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Janey. Counsel Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks first to my colleague Counselor Janey for including me this on this hearing order that really is an important piece of the work that we do here on the council for all the residents of Boston, but in particular, many of our neighborhoods that are really feeling some of the pressure from this work. We all know that the lack of stable alcohol and drug-free living, those environments can be real obstacles to those that are seeking a lifetime of recovery. And destructive living environments or hell houses, I think, as Counsel Janey just mentioned, I think that's, that really captures the essence of what's happening in some of these situations, that these experiences can completely derail recovery for some that are maybe the most motivated to find recovery, and it can really derail them. And... It can really derail them. And real safe havens, as Counsel Janey referred to them, real sober living homes, experiences that are supportive, that are helping individuals in attempting to find recovery, live a lifetime of recovery, that's what we need to make sure that we're working towards. And when the Massachusetts Alliance of Sober Housing has 167 houses certified, and only two of them are in the city of Boston, it really has, you know, very clearly, we have work to do here in this city, and we have so much to do, especially in those neighborhoods where it's highly concentrated, Roxbury, Dorchester, and Mattapan. But across the city, we need to make sure that we have opportunities for recovery. And we talked yesterday in our public hearing, our public testimony hearing, about the need for Boston to continue to do this work, for Boston to be supported by others in doing this work, and that communities around Boston, not just in our own neighborhoods, help in this effort. And as Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, it's so important that these efforts that we're working towards as a city that we're doing together to protect individuals, to protect neighborhoods, and ensure that the services that are provided to those that are looking for a lifetime of recovery are able to find that recovery in a meaningful, healthy, safe, supportive way. And it is the only way that we can get out of this crisis. It's the only way that we can find solutions to the chaos that individuals are facing. And this isn't new to us. I think as a body, this isn't new to us. Work has been done over the years to create more safe living opportunities for those that are struggling. So I look forward to this work ahead. I look forward to partnership, not just with all of you, but to the Office of Recovery Services, as well as our partners at the state level, as well as our surrounding cities and towns, their support in helping this work.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Counsel Asabi George. Madam Clerk, if you could add Counsel Baker, Counsel Siomo, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Pressley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, as well as the Chair. Docket 0851 will be assigned to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery.
Docket number 0852, Councilors Campbell and Edwards offer the following resolution in support of the Latina Circle earmark in state budget.
Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, Counsel Edwards is out sick, but I want to thank her for her partnership on this. This is a resolution that we have both put forward, and I know there are many colleagues in the room who also are supporting this as well. So I look forward to people adding their name, but for the purposes of a resolution, you can only have so many cosponsors. But this is a resolution in support of the Latina Circle earmark that's in the state budget that was filed by Rep. Sanchez. The Latina Circle, just to give people a little bit of context, and I think the resolution is pretty self-explanatory. It's a Boston-based nonprofit. It's a social venture that was founded in 2012 with the goal of advancing Latina leaders across various industries in the Commonwealth. In 2017, this organization launched what's called Amplify Latinx. It's a nonpartisan collaborative movement focused significantly on increasing Latino civic engagement and representation in elected positions, appointed positions, boards, commissions. They've done incredible work so far, have held a couple of conferences and civic engagement trainings that have pulled in hundreds of leaders as well as thousands of participants. They are always looking for funding. We know that Latinos are the fastest-growing demographic in Massachusetts, representing over 11% of the population, and 20% of Boston's residents, the fastest-growing here as well. And so this group has been working with folks in the city, as well as folks at the State House and in private sector and philanthropy to find funding. Rep. Sanchez filed an amendment to the House of Representatives FY19 budget, putting aside an earmark of $150,000 for this group and for this work. And so we're standing with him and others to say we support this, given the districts in the city that we represent. And so I look forward to my colleagues signing on and supporting this work as well. I think there's a possibility, if we show our support, that this can actually happen for these folks who are doing incredible work. So thank you, Counsel Siomo, and thank you again to Counsel Edwards, who is homesick and hopefully not watching this.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Counsel Flynn?
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. The Latina Circle are leaders in our city. I also want to say thank you to Rep. Sanchez for his leadership on this issue. It is critical that we continue to develop our Latina leaders and to ensure our future Latina leaders have all the services and opportunities to be successful. Mentoring our young students, partnering with Latina youth, creating opportunities, education, and training for Latina youth as well. As someone who represents a large Latino population in Boston, I also have seen the hard work drive determination of those in the Latino community. I'm proud to join Counsel Campbell. I'm proud to join Counsel Edwards on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Counselor Asabi George?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Please add my name.
Please.
I would like to just add and recognize, and I think, I guess amplify is one of the, was one of the words that the Latina Circle uses, but amplify the words of both Counsel Flynn and Counsel Campbell, and of course, Counsel Edwards, who have taken the lead in proposing this resolution. But really to celebrate and acknowledge the Latina Circle, very specific goal of building power or power building, and how that creates a real, a larger voice in the civic engagement realm, and really want to celebrate and acknowledge that effort. But in particular, I'd like to thank the two co-founders of the Latina Circle, Betty Francisco and Anita Roman. Without really their effort and their leadership, this would not have come to fruition. There wouldn't be a line item at the State House. We wouldn't be here asking for this resolution to support that funding. And just, you know, it's, I'm looking for ways to choose my words carefully, but just really, this is a celebration of that effort and a really special group that is using power in such a special way, in productive way, in positive way, and wanted to make sure that we were thanking the co-founders, because without their foresight, without their desire to move this forward, we wouldn't be here and obviously thank Chairman Sanchez for his effort at the state level for this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to add your name, Counsel?
Yes, please.
And Counsel Flynn, add Counsel Flynn's name, Counsel Janey, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Pressley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, Counsel Baker, and the Chair. And Chair recognizes Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a rise to add my name, but also want to recognize the great work that the council's own Juan Lopez does on these issues. As both a local statewide and national leader for LULAC, he really sets the bar. He's been up on the forefront of these very issues, and so we're in a great position in place because we have him as part of the city council. But this sort of serves as to, I guess, it's really indicative as to Juan's leadership, what Juan has been working on, and what he's been looping us all in for the years that he's been here. So kudos to Juan Lopez, folks at LULAC, but also the partners here at Latinx to make sure that they're trying to make a difference for our city.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Please add Counsel Flaherty's name. Docket 0852. So Counsel Campbell moves suspension and adoption of docket 0852. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and docket 0852 has been adopted. Docket 0853, Madam Clerk.
Docket 0853, Counsel Campbell offered the following order for hearing to review the Boston Public Schools' strategies to serve off-track youth.
Chair recognizes Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. At this time, I would like to...
Sorry.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add Counsel Asabi George and Counsel Janey as cosponsors to the hearing.
Counsel moves to suspend Rule 12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Counsel Siomo. So I think many folks have seen this report, and if you haven't, you should go find it. We have copies. It was a report that was commissioned by Boston Public Schools as well as the Barr Foundation, and done by Ernst and Young, it's hearted on to look at our high school students, but particularly those who were not being successful at the high school level. And the report came back and found, and this was the conclusion, that BPS had not made progress in the last 10 years at our high school level, particularly for off-track, high-risk students. And despite new initiatives and additional resources funneled into BPS, we weren't seeing significant improvements. And Boston Public Schools has already spent almost $50 million additionally on support for high school and students who fall into this category. We all know that Boston has the highest per pupil spending of the nation's 100 biggest school districts with over 22,000 per pupil. So I, for me, this says that resources alone won't do it. I think there are numerous resources in BPS. The question is, how are we spending the money and where are we spending it? And are we directing them to the programs that are working and to the people that need it the most, particularly at the school level? So when I see this report, it's almost 4,000 students. I actually had someone suggest that that number wasn't significant. When you have students that are almost, our population in BPS is almost 57,000 students. I always say, if it's one or two students that are off-track in our system, that's a problem, particularly when the majority of these students are students of color coming from across the city of Boston, but particularly certain districts, including my own. I think this is an opportunity to have a conversation, not just with Boston Public Schools, and not just in partnership with my colleagues, the Chair of the Education Committee, Counsel Asabi George, and the Vice Chair of the Education Committee, Counsel Janey, but the teachers' union. There are many teachers who saw this report, who work in our high schools, who are interested in being a part of this conversation. There are parents who want to be a part of this conversation. There are students who want to be a part of this conversation. So how do we work in partnership with BPS, the mayor's office, to think about strategies to change this? And also to think about how we put forth the plan that is more public in nature, that has actual teeth and benchmarks and goals attached to it, so that we can hold ourselves accountable when addressing this issue. I think the city of Boston, I think we're doing that, but we need to prioritize not just coming up with a plan, but sometimes recognizing that we need to maybe look outside of our own system to others to help us develop a plan as well to address this issue. So I look forward to working with my colleagues, as well as the mayor and Boston Public Schools, to make sure, one, that this report doesn't just end up on a file cabinet gathering dust, that we take it seriously, that we do something with it, and that we put up a mirror and acknowledge what we have done that is working and what we are doing that isn't working, and look to do something different in a short timeframe. Our students can't wait any longer, particularly our high school students. And one thing I will add that was very depressing about this report, we have students who are off-track in the eighth grade and showing all kinds of signs of being off-track, not being able to read and write at the level on which is appropriate for their grade level. What's worse is, we have students who are on-track, graduating from middle school, going into high school, and then becoming off-track once they hit our high schools. That's a problem. As a graduate of Boston Latin School, we hold up Latin School as a beacon, and I'm very proud, along with Counsel O'Malley, I know, to be a Latin School alum. Every school should be excellent. Every school should have high expectations for our students. We do not have time to waste. We have models within our city, within our Commonwealth, of course, within the country. So I absolutely look forward to working with my colleagues, Counsel Janey and Counsel Asabi George, and the rest of you who have been talking about these issues for a very long time, and I know are passionate about making sure that our students have access to programming that would not only prepare them to go out to the world, but even for the new jobs and new industries that are coming online in STEM and other areas. So look forward to working with you. Counsel Siomo, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Asabi George?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and thank you, Counsel Campbell, for suspending rules and adding myself and Counsel Janey. This is no doubt, especially as a former high school teacher, there are no doubt concerns that we have within the district about student success and missing a number of kids, and that number of 3,400 is of the high school population. So it's, that's a dramatic enough number that we need to be focused on this work. I also want to make sure that during this hearing that we take a look at that study that was, that was put together and funded through the Barr Foundation, because some of the, it left off some really important pieces that we also need to look at in order to measure student success and the work that's happening in our schools. We need to make sure that we're also looking at attendance and tidiness. This came up in some of our budget hearings, the importance of kids obviously being in school and the relation to their opportunity to succeed, as well as tardiness and the impact that has on student success. I also think as a city, and certainly as a district, we need to do a much better job engaging with families. Because a student is in high school doesn't mean that it's time to disengage and disconnect from the family experience as well as the community experience. So it's frustrating when we know so much of what's missing. It's also frustrating when I know so much of what we're not counting when we think about these studies. And where these studies are looking for, not that we don't have students that are off-track that we need to pay attention to, but these studies often overlook some of the great successes so that they can simply highlight failures. And we've got some great kids who are struggling, who are challenged, who are on, who are finding some small success on their way, and we just need to make sure that we're doing a better job helping those kids succeed and supporting them where they are, as opposed to starting at some point where a particular funder of a report wants us, wants us to be. So we do, we have lots of work to do. We need to do this in partnership with lots of different people, including the kids, including the schools and those that are delivering the direct services, and those that are supporting that work, be it family or community. So I look forward to this hearing. I look forward to this hearing happening soon, so that as we wrap up this school year and prepare for the next school year, that we're doing it with more excitement, with more positive energy, and certainly with more support for our kids. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Counsel Janey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counsel Campbell, for leading this effort and for your sense of urgency. Certainly want to acknowledge and thank Counsel Asabi George for her leadership as the Chair of the Education Committee. For me, this issue, certainly very urgent, very important. As an education advocate, just having seen what BPS has done over the years and what has not been done over the years. I remember when we had high school renewal before us and the schools were broken down, the high schools were broken down into small learning communities and small schools as a way at getting at the same very issue. We don't take the time that we need to kind of stop and reflect and learn from these different initiatives. We just kind of move on to the next initiative. We moved on to turnaround schools next. We often leave out of the conversation our young people who are most impacted. We don't acknowledge enough that opportunity gaps happen long before our children even enter our schools, that our children are tracked from a very early age, that we have too many Black and Latino students, particularly boys, in sub-separate special education, and we're not dealing with them. We have other students that are in advanced work, other students in excellence for all. We've got all of these initiatives, but still, we have this very persistent problem. And so, you know, in addition to be, being a longtime education advocate, I just think about being a BPS parent myself when my daughter was in high school, and how difficult it was to find the right school, community for her. She actually went to four different high schools before graduating, one as her freshman year, one as a sophomore, one for her junior year, and then another school as a senior. And it is quite frustrating. It's very hard for our parents and for our young people. We need to do much more around making sure our schools are trauma-informed. And so I very much look forward to having this hearing and working in partnership with Counsel Campbell and Counsel Asabi George, as well as my colleagues here and those in BPS, but especially our young people, our parents, and our teachers. And so thank you again, and thank you. Hope you will all join us in this effort.
Thank you. Please add Counsel Baker's name, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel O'Malley, Counsel Pressley, Counsel Wu, Counsel Zachem, and the Chair. Docket 0853 will be placed in the Committee on Education. Madam Clerk, personnel orders?
Docket number 0854, Counsel Campbell for Counsel Flaherty.
Counsel Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 05, actually, I think I have that wrong, 0584.
0854.
Let me try that again. Counsel, you were in docket 0854, correct?
Counselor, you were in docket 0854, correct? Okay. Counselor Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0854. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0854 has been passed.
Docket number 0855, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Flaherty.
Counselor Flaherty seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0855. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0855 has been passed.
Docket number 0856, Counselor Campbell for the following...
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0856. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0856 has been passed.
Docket number 0857, Counselor Campbell offered the following order.
The Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0857. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0857 has been passed.
Docket number 0858, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Zachem.
Counselor Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0858. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0858 has been passed.
Docket number 0859, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Zachem.
Counselor Zachem seeks suspension of the rules and passage of 0859. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0859 has been passed.
Docket number 0860, Counselor Campbell for Counselor O'Malley.
Counselor O'Malley seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0860. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0860 has been passed.
Docket number 0861, Counselor Campbell for Counselor Wu.
Counselor Wu seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0861. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0861 has been passed. I am informed by the late clerk that I have, that there is one late-file matter.
I did.
I don't know what I just said, but... Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am informed by the clerk that we have one late-file matter, which in the absence of objection will be added to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr.
Hearing and seeing no objections, the late-file matter is added. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Dear Clerk Beeny, I regret to inform you that I will be unable to attend the Boston City Council meeting of June 6, 2018, due to an illness. I look forward to returning to the council in good health in the immediate future. Regards, Lydia Edwards, Boston City Councilor, District 1.
The late-file matter will be placed on file. Moving on to the green sheets, anybody wishing to remove a matter? Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I stand to pull docket 0566. It's a schedule of parking fines from the green sheet, which is listed on page four of 17, and just ask through the Chair that the clerk poll the committee.
Okay. At this time, Counselor Flaherty, who's the Chairman of the Committee on Government Operations, looks to remove or pull docket 0566, which is on page four of 17 of the green sheets. Madam Clerk, if you could poll that committee.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Aye.
Counselor O'Malley, yes. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
Yes.
There is a major...
Thank you, Counselor Presley.
And Counselor Presley. Madam President, this matter is now before the body.
Okay. Docket 0566 is now properly before the council. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On Friday, June 1, the Committee on Government Operations held a hearing on docket 0566. That matter was sponsored by...
Actually, hold on one second. We could rewind. Madam Clerk is going to read the docket for the public and for the record, and then we will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Page four of 17 of the green sheets. In the Committee on Government Operations, docket number 0566, sponsored by the Mayor, message in order to amend the City of Boston Code ordinance, Chapter 6, Section 6-6.3, and the schedule of parking fines filed in the office of the City Clerk on April 9, 2018. Refer to committee on April 11, 2018. There was a hearing on June 1, 2018, and it is now properly before the body.
Very good.
Thank you. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0566, it's an ordinance amending the City of Boston Code to update the fine schedule for specific categories of violations, as well as creates a new category of violation for overnight street sweeping, which will be designated as a no-tow violation. Based on the information that was provided at the hearing on Friday, May 11, as well as conversations with small business owners, docket 0566 will be amended in Section 2 and Section 3 of the ordinance, which the section lays out the fee structure related to double parking with both Zone A and Zone B. The fee for parking within Zone A will be 55, and the fee for parking within Zone B will be 35. These changes are put forth to ensure that the fee increases will not overly be overly burdensome to residents and small local businesses, at the same time ensuring safe driving behavior. So the Chair, as the Chair, recommending that docket 0566 pass in a new draft. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, a point of clarification through you to the Chair of the Committee on the new category of street sweeping being a no-towing, is that completely eliminating towing for overnight street cleaning around the city?
That $90 fee, I guess, sorry, through the Chair to my colleague. So it'll be a $90 fee, no tow, and it'll be posted 12:01 a.m. till the morning, I think it's 7:00 a.m., 12:01 a.m. So in an effort to get the street sweepers to the curb, obviously curb behavior with respect to people parking where street cleaning is occurring in an exchange for, so the overly aggressive towing, which this city has experienced, we have an opportunity to, for the city to capture that revenue, at the same time be able to get the street sweeper to the curb and clean neighborhood streets in the designated areas where this program will be in effect.
So, sorry again, Madam President.
Go ahead, Counselor.
That is extending what had been the Charlestown pilot to the entire city.
That's correct. Well, it's a Charlestown, it was the Charlestown pilot program which will be now made the program.
Thank you. Madam President, I, given that, you know, when this has been brought up in the past, I've heard from many, both in the business community and residential community in my district, particularly in Beacon Hill and Back Bay, around the desire to maintain overnight towing for street cleaning, particularly around Charles Street, Commonwealth Avenue, Beacon Street. You know, with that provision in there, I will be voting against this. I do think the other changes are, many of the other changes are long overdue to improve safety and obviously capture some revenue for need improvements to the city. But given some of those issues in neighborhoods I currently represent, I will be voting no.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay. At this time, Counselor Flaherty, who is the Chair... Oh, I apologize. Counselor Janey, you have the floor.
Yes. So thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say, I certainly appreciate the lower fees. So I think this is a big concern for me in my district, and that my district will be hit hard by these higher fees. And I think also with the overnight tow, I certainly get a lot of complaints there. I think moving forward, it'll be very important to follow this closely to ensure that there's equity throughout the city. So I just wanted to go on the record saying that. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Janey. Counselor Flaherty, you have the floor.
Thank you, and through the Chair, and through Counselor Janey's point in discussions and negotiations with the administration, we looked at sort of how the fee increases were determined, where the violations were coming from. We actually had a neighborhood-by-neighborhood breakdown, revenue estimates, as well as the raw data that would give us sort of a better understanding as to which neighborhoods are dealing with the bulk and the burden of, that comes obviously with sort of parking issues and parking enforcement through Counselor Janey's efforts at that hearing. We've got a commitment from the administration with respect to some of the smaller local business districts to increase meter capacity there. Now, that was a big concern. Counselor Janey had a hearing out in her neighborhood that Counselor Wu and I had attended, and we heard the folks in her district loud and clear that they want an opportunity to have more parking turnover, particularly in the small local business districts, to encourage more businesses to commit to going there, but also to provide opportunities for patrons to shop there. And there's sort of a, I guess it's a, we're trying to, we're dealing with sue issues. We're obviously dealing with driver and pedestrian and cycle safety. At the same time, we're trying to listen to the small local businesses that are the lifeline of our neighborhoods. They're also in the back of a lot of the shirts, the softball program, the Little League, the youth hockey, the lacrosse, at the CWO's, the basketballs. So we're trying to be fair and be reasonable, recognizing that there's a need to increase the categories, but at the same time, we don't want to be punitive. We don't want to punish residents that pull their car over and have to run their infant up to the second or third floor indoor, bring a meal to a sick or aging relative, and/or empty out their trunk with groceries. We're just trying to find that, strike that balance where we're putting obviously public safety and pedestrian and vehicular and cycle safety first, but not really grind people down. I think that this was sort of a fair and balanced compromise from the administration, but taking into effect, taking into consideration what the testimony that we heard at the hearing, listening to the plea of small business owners, but also listening to our colleagues in terms of how the neighborhood breakdown is happening, where are the fines occurring, where is the revenue being generated? And so it's all very fair point, and I think that this sort of strikes that balance with the administration. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty, and thank you for further clarification, particularly for obviously the public. At this time, Counselor Flaherty, who is the Chairman of the Committee on Government Operations, recommends acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0566 in this new draft. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0566 has been passed in a new draft. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are zero late-file matters for the consent agenda. The Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has been adopted. Before we move on to memorials and close out our meeting, I just had to quickly acknowledge, I thought you guys would find this funny. I always like to acknowledge young people who are obviously in our chamber and who participate in our meetings. So I happened to look up, and I saw some younger folk in the chamber, and come to find out they are all, I think, interns in Counselor Wu's office. So welcome and welcome to Boston City Hall, and welcome to the council, and may you work hard over the summer for Counselor Wu. But I thought that was funny because he took over her role. So thank you, guys, for allowing me to say that. At this time, I ask my colleagues, all guests and staff, to please rise. Oh, I apologize. Counselor Asabi George, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a statement about Memorial Day.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George.
Because we didn't have a meeting last week, I just wanted to share with you, with all of you, a small event that I went to in Jamaica Plain on Memorial Day. It was a Hero Square rededication for someone who was killed in action during Vietnam, but Dan Kellett was his name. And it was a rededication, and the reason I wanted to bring it up was it was a very, we, I think, all participated in some larger neighborhood events, very small, private, few neighbors, and family members. A rededication, the Office of Veterans Affairs has created these new signs to hang that have one of those, I think, I forget what they're called, little squares. Q, what are they, young people will know, the QR squares, that you could scan and get more information about the person that the Hero Square is named in honor of. But, you know, a member of Commissioner Sterling's staff, Daryl Miller, was there. I just wanted to thank him for his effort in putting the day together. But Rosendale resident Tom Sullivan is who invited me, and many of us know Tom. He is a graduate of Boston Tech. As I'm a graduate of Boston Tech, that's why I was invited. They had the color guard from the John D. O'Brien School in attendance. And just really was a wonderful opportunity to remember one of our fallen from many years ago, but that rededication, the idea that we don't ever forget, and the idea that we're also modernizing some of our Hero Squares, which is a really special, very special event. But because it was so small and so private, not many got to witness it. So I wanted to take this opportunity to share it and hope that we all had similar experiences and powerful experiences on Memorial Day. But thank you for the opportunity to share.
No, thank you, Counselor Asabi George, for attending, but also thank you for sharing. Anyone else? At this time, I would like all guests and my colleagues and staff to please rise as we close out today's meeting and adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Zachem, Stephen Mendich. For Counselor Edwards, William Bruno. For Counselor Flaherty, Mary LaRusa. And Olga Dumot. For Counselor Siomo, Francis Bud Burke. For the entire council, Marzuk Mohammed, Robert F. Kennedy. And today, we acknowledge it is D-Day. It is 74 years since D-Day, where U.S. men and Allied forces stormed Normandy, which set the Allied victory into motion. And so in memory of these heroes, we celebrate on Memorial Day. And other days, we will also acknowledge the 74 years since D-Day. At this time, I ask that we all take a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, the Chair moves that the council adjourns today's meeting in memory of those aforementioned individuals, including those World War II heroes. We are scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, June 13, at noon in this chamber at Boston City Hall. All those in favor, adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The council is adjourned.